Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order. And Ms. Gleichman, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Mills?
Present.
Commissioner McCombs?
Present.
Commissioner Ryan?
Present.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman? Commissioner Dretzky?
Here.
Commissioner Courier?
Here.
Okay, and I believe Mr. Stoneman is excused. Yes. Okay. Number two on our agenda are minutes. We have no minutes at this time, but I believe we are due the May 22nd and the June 26th minutes, in addition to whatever will be tonight. Okay? Item number three is public comment. This is a time for anybody in the public that would like to speak to the Planning Commission about something that's not on the agenda. We ask that you come up, state your name and your city, and we will be happy to give you three minutes to speak.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Ron Wertham. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Realtors Association. It's called NIPSR. We do Skagit Island County members. We were here a few months ago for you guys regarding short-term rentals. And I understand after that, you did propose to go forward with owner-occupied recommendation, short-term rentals, to the City Council. And I know that recommendation went forward. I'm just asking if there's any follow-up to that or discussion with the staff in regards to how that will proceed with establishing procedures, if that can make their agenda. And I know I can't take questions, but hopefully that encourages discussion and move forward with that discussion with you guys. That's about it. If there are questions, obviously I'm here if you need to. Okay?
Thank you very much. So that recommendation did go to the City Council, I believe, with a unanimous vote of the Planning Commission. And I don't know, Mr. Coleman, do you have any kind of update about short-term rentals, owner-occupied? Where, I know the City Council mentioned that they wanted to wait and put that somewhere as we're working on the comprehensive plan.
You'll have to check back with us during the day. I don't recall.
Sure, I understand. Just wanted to see where you are in that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, none online, I'm assuming? Okay. Then item number four is public hearings. Don't believe we have a public hearing tonight. So we're moving to item five, other business, Planning Commission procedures. So, we have had this before us for, I don't know, four or five meetings. So our goal tonight is to get this done and to vote on, get it approved, whatever way we need to, so that we don't need to bring it back again. Now, I understand that the clean copy that you have, do you have, you have the clean copy? I understand it still has a couple of mistakes in it. And, you know, we also have a member of the public that has given us some suggestions for edits, so now is the time.
Chairman Martin?
Mr. Mills?
I've got the easy one. In section three, items A, B, C, and D are repeated as items E, F, G, and H. We'll need to, I guess we wouldn't technically have to, but it would be nice to remove the redundancy.
Right. I saw that as well. So if we are ready to make a motion at some point, we can just make the motion minus these items. Are there any items from the public? We have a letter to the public from William Turner, and he has five recommendations. Are there any of these that you would like to discuss?
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Call me. There, so he, it looks like maybe there's a typo regarding the code for...
I can address that.
Can we verify that that's...
I can address that.
Okay, go ahead.
Great.
If I may.
Yes, please.
Okay, so there is, this isn't actually a typo. So there's, in chapter 35 of the RCW, talks about cities and towns. And in chap, in section 35.63, it talks about enacting planning commissions. So that goes for all cities. There's also a separate section, 35A, a separate chapter, or title, 35A, which addresses optional municipal code cities. So those are cities that have taken a sort of a different tact than the standard first-class or second-class cities. And most of the cities in Washington are code cities, including Anacortes. So code cities follow the rules of both 35, RCW 35, and RCW 35A. So in RCW 35A.63 also, it talks about planning agencies and including, that would refer to the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and any other bodies that the council may appoint. So that's, there are two separate sections. And in 35A, it talks about, it's kind of more specific standards. But after going over this carefully with our city attorney, chapter 35 is, or title 35 is applicable. And 35.63 does talk about planning commissions, and that is under, that is how the city of Anacortes has appointed its, its planning commission. There's really no wrong answer to this, after looking at it very carefully. Both of them work together, and so it doesn't really matter if it's 35A.63 or just 35.63 according to our attorney's interpretation. And after looking at other, looking at codes from other cities that are code cities like us, they also kind of go back and forth. In our municipal code, where we enable the planning commission, it just refers to chapter 35, not 35A. So that's why when our legal department wrote this, they stuck with 35 instead of 35A. Long answer. But it's a complex issue, and, and Mr. Turner's comment was not, was not incorrect. It was actually kind of a hazy issue, so we dug pretty deep on that.
Thank you for doing that. So you're satisfied that leaving it with RCW 35.63 is fine? Or would you like us to add? I mean, there's no reason that we couldn't add it if you would...
Our attorney said it's fine.
It's fine?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's good enough for me. Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to look at before I'm...
Chairman Martin, I have just...
Yes.
An item number two. I mean, I like the idea of giving the public more time to be able to have the materials for the meeting in order to absorb that. But again, I think I would direct that to Mr. Coleman to see if that's an undue hardship. I mean, I know you're busy as well, but I think that that just gives people a little bit more time to take a look at the materials.
It can be a hardship at times, but we do our best to have it the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting. So we're usually close to that five days.
Yeah.
But I think in the past, we've cut it as close as Friday night. And if there's a snafu, if, you know, it doesn't get published correctly, it may not go until Monday morning. So that gives us, sometimes two days may accidentally happen, but our goal is to have it at least the Friday before, if not Thursday.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, Ms. Coleman, is part of that just due to the lag? Are we still having staffing issues in the building department? Is that what part of it is? Or is it just lag in information?
Well, sometimes a lot of this moves really quickly, and we're trying to acquire, trying to get information pulled together at last minute, you know, depending on if we're waiting for consultants or legal review or something. But it's nice, the two days is nice, but five days is our, is our goal.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Courier, what are your thoughts?
Personally, I feel okay with that. I do feel like most of the time, the materials are out, you know, earlier than that two-day window. It's always nice if we can get them out as soon as we can, just for the public's sake, to be able to absorb it. I don't know that, I personally feel like we need to dictate that it's five days as opposed to two. Like you said, I can appreciate that things are moving quickly. But that's the spirit of it. I appreciate, you know, I appreciate that clarification.
I would just hate for us to have to, like, cancel the Planning Commission meeting because staff was unable to get it to you, or there was a snafu in it getting published properly.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I'm, again, I'm just looking at Mr. Turner's five suggestions. We've now discussed two of the five. Are you fine with taking no action on the rest of them? Or would you like to talk about them? Fine either way. Okay? Not seeing anybody jumping up to talk. So I think we have put that matter to bed. Is there anything else in the rules of procedure that you would like to talk about before we entertain a motion to approve? Mr. Dretzky?
Is the, the information that was in the packet, is that the final draft? When I was reading on my computer before I came down here, that was in our packet?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I would question, whether we want to amend it, and I'm sorry that we're doing it, that I'm bringing this up so late, but it's just kind of stuck in my craw today. The fact that the very last sentence in the proposal requires 100% attendance in order to modify or change anything. And it seems to me that we go, would we consider it an 80% super quorum, which means that one person could be gone? And that, again, jury duty, illness vacations, family obligations. How often have we all been here? And I'd hate to have something shelved until we could all get together, which sometimes takes a while.
What are your thoughts about that? So how would, how would you write it? What would, how would it read?
A quorum required of 80% of the seven members of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Which would basically allow for one absentee. Unless my math is wrong. Please, we have somebody checking me. 83%. Nothing wrong with checking me, trust me. I preach that at work a lot. So again, it's just, I know it's late to, late to make a change. It's the very last sentence in the proposal. But again, if we needed to vote and one person's gone, we're not voting. And I'd just like...
And the vote is to amend the rules of this procedure?
Correct.
Yeah.
So who knows how often that would happen? It might be very minimal, but again, if we ever had to for some reason, we might be delayed getting that done.
True. Go ahead. Mr. Ryan?
Oh, no, I was just agreeing with that as, in the fact, over the last several months, we've always had one absentee, if not two. And so we have not had everybody here. How many meetings would that be? Five? So makes sense to me that we can continue moving forward.
Mr. Mills?
I'm okay with the idea of six of the seven. So I could craft a motion. What language would we use? Supermajority would do it?
I thought it's supermajority.
So, so you could, you could write a superquorum of six of seven, of seven members, commissioners must be present to amend the rules of procedure?
And then a tie, would that go to, if it was split decision, would that go to the absentee individual too?
So the question is, what do you do if there's a tie? If there were six members, what would you do if there's a tie?
Three, three.
And I think if there is a tie, the motion loses, if I'm not mistaken. Okay? So how, we've got that as a possible...
Could be shelved till the next time when there are seven. Then it's, kill it, but it certainly wouldn't pass, so.
Good point. All right, so is there anything else in these procedures that you're not comfortable with?
Chairman Martin, they look good to me, now that we've taken out the duplication, unless there's any other errors that anybody else spotted.
So we would need a motion to approve?
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
I move to approve the Anacortes Planning Commission rules, as in our final packets, with the exception of deleting the redundancy contained in section three, where A, B, C, and D are duplicated by E, F, G, and H. And second, to amend section 10, paragraph B to read, "A superquorum of six of seven commissioners must be present to amend the rules of procedure."
Okay. I'm not going to re, I'm not going to reset that whole thing. We just need a second.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Mills, a second by Mr. Ryan, to approve the final copy of the Planning Commission rules of procedure with two changes. One, to remove the redundancy in section three, is it? And the second change would be the very last sentence to change from all members present to have a supermajority present of six out of seven commissioners. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner McCombs?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Courier?
Yes.
Commissioner Dretzky?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes. Yay!
Forward progress.
Thank you.
Chairman Martin?
One, one last thing. On the current Planning Commission rules, current meaning 2013, I noticed that there was a resolution in order to approve them. And I talked with Mr. Coleman, and actually, the ones before that had a resolution as well, but they were resolutions of the Planning Commission, and he is not recommending a resolution. We have, we have just approved the new procedures, and that's it. Okay?
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
I would like to highlight two paragraphs, which I think could be very useful to us going forward. Section 2.4, paragraph B, "The Planning Commission may create special committees and assign up to three members to such committees." And in section five, "The Planning Commission may conduct informal study sessions to carry out its duties." I think those are two things that we need to keep in mind as we go forward, as tools that we can use to our benefit, but more importantly, to the community's benefit.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, let's move on to item 5B, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, Tentative Planning Commission Review Schedule. And it looks like Ms. Graege is there.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Libby Graege with the Anacortes Planning Department. And this evening, I am here to give a little update and talk about next steps for the 2025 Anacortes Comprehensive Plan Update process. I'm going to talk about the current project status, give an update on the city's community engagement efforts, and then also talk about the next steps and talk about the draft schedule that I passed out tonight. So the current project status, this is the preliminary timeline, generalized visual timeline that was adopted along with the Public Participation Plan. And so this is showing kind of the overall process, anticipated overall process for the comp plan update. We are right about in this area. We're in August 2024. So right now, the, the work that's going on is still information gathering, analysis, as I mentioned, public engagement efforts. We're starting to draft proposed updates to the goals and policies for each of the elements of the comprehensive plan. And so that's, that's kind of the work that's happening right now. We haven't talked specifically about the comprehensive plan in a little while here at the Planning Commission. So I was just going to give a quick update about what's been happening over the summer of 2024. You may recall, I think many of you were here, back in June, there was the first community open house that had a climate and land use and housing focus, and that was really well-attended. I think we had over 100, 100 people. And for folks that are interested in watching the presentation, or going back and seeing what the poster boards were, or the comments were, all of that information is on our website. So you're able to go back and kind of take a look at the, that information. Then in July, the City Council held a work session and a public hearing on the docket for the 2025 update. And of course, many members, I'm not sure if all the members of the Planning Commission did attend and listen to those discussions. In August, City Council adopted Resolution 3161, which established the docket for the 2025 comp plan update. And now, in August, I think this will be considered at the next City Council meeting. But the City Council Planning Committee made recommendations on which measures within the Housing Action Plan to bring forward and consider during the comprehensive plan update process. So full council will be discussing that at their next meeting. So hopefully we will have, we'll know what those are, and we'll be able to move forward with bringing those to Planning Commission soon. This, I don't know if you can see that, but on the right-hand side is just a screenshot of our project website. And it's just a plug to show you what it looks like, and then that, all of the past meetings and upcoming event information are in this table. So it's kind of a handy place to, to go back and do research, find out what's happened in the past, and what might be coming up related to the comp plan. So over the summer, city staff and the consultants have also been continuing to collect data and do analysis to help inform the updates for all of the comp plan elements. The Makers has been busy preparing draft land use, housing, and housing element goals and policies for review by the Planning Commission. And city staff and members of the Planning Commission have been going to various public events to bring awareness about the comp plan update process. So some of the ongoing public engagement efforts that staff is undertaking are, and you're aware of all these, I think, but these are all mentioned in the Public Participation Plan. We have the webpage, of course, that I just mentioned. There is a city comp plan contact email address that people can send their thoughts, questions, comments, ideas, at any time, whenever you want. And we will accept those and make sure that they move forward with the process, and they go before the Planning Commission and City Council for their consideration. We have our subscription email list, where you can sign up, add your email address, and you will receive notifications about the comprehensive plan update, upcoming meetings, availability of documents, and such. So it's a good way to keep informed. We have our Facebook page, and we've also, over the summer, as I mentioned, been doing pop-up tabling at various community events. And I have a lot of pictures, so I'm going to show them off. So just to recap, so this is the open house that happened on June 5th, 2024. And again, a pretty, pretty good turnout. City staff also attended the Waterfront Festival on, on June 1st. We had a booth where we were right next to the sewer department and the water department right between them. So that was a good opportunity to chat with folks and give out some information. We also attended the Anacortes Pride Parade on June 22nd. Had a lot of interest there, people signing up for the comp plan email list, and also lots of, lots of good feedback. We were at Whale of a Sail on June 29th, right by the post office. Kids, Kids Are Best Fest on July 13th, we had a, a table, and that was a lot of fun. And then John was at the Summer Concert Series on July 24th. I just throw this in here because my favorite event so far that I attended was the Kids Are Best Fest. That was just a ton of fun and got super interesting feedback and conversations with the kids. We had this interactive activity where there was a, oops, we had a, a foam core board with places for the kids to write, and we asked them questions. Well, we had them write their name, their age, and then the things that they liked about their neighborhood, and the things that they thought would make their neighborhood better. And we got really great range of comments that I thoroughly enjoyed, and lots of good ideas. I won't read through those, but I like the less cats one. It's kind of funny. So the upcoming public engagement opportunities are, there will be a Planning Commissioner at the Summer Concert Series, August 16th. At the Fidalgo Bay Day, we'll have a table with the Parks Department. That's on Saturday, August 24th. We'll also be at Open Streets, which is the next day, on August 25th, and we'll have our, Transportation Consultant will be there that day to, to take some feedback on transportation issues. And I think they have an interactive activity for folk... And I think they have an interactive activity for folks, too. Be at the Farmer's Market on August 31. The A-Town is Our Town newsletter is primarily focused on the comprehensive plan, this next edition, and that's going to be hitting mailboxes in September. The Climate Policy, Action Policy Advisory Team is in the works right now. We hope to have it established by the end of August and the first meeting in September. And then finally, planning to have the next community open house in late October. So lots, lots coming up.
We intend to use the A-Town newsletter to publicize the open house. We're timing it that way.
Okay, so moving on to the next steps. So the next step really is to start bringing the draft proposed amendments to the goals and policies of the comp plan to the planning commission and the public for review. So we'll actually start to have some documents to sit down and review and comment on, which I think a lot of people have been waiting for. These are all of the elements of the comprehensive plan, and they're actually goals and policies in volume one and then background information. So we'll be updating both of those items. This is showing sort of the really generalized simplified process that we're going through to review each of the elements and determine what are needed or suggested updates to the policies. So of course, starting with gathering data, doing analysis and assessment to determine what needs to change, if anything, then producing the draft goals and policies for planning commission and public review. After that draft is out and there's public comment and public hearings, we'll take that feedback and integrate it into a full draft of the entire comprehensive plan with all of the goals and policies and all of the background information. And then that will go through another round of public review before planning commission makes a recommendation to city council. And then city council will have their review process and adoption. So I was trying to show, you know, we're like way over here on this side of this timeline, and each of the different elements of the comprehensive plan, we have consultants that are helping on some of them, and some of them are staff-led elements. And so the land use, housing, and transportation are a little bit farther ahead of the other elements. And so I'm just trying to show here that we're still working on data gathering and analysis for most of the elements. We plan to bring the land use, housing, and transportation forward first. And here's a screenshot of that schedule that you have in front of you.
So if I can go back to the previous one. So we're in the data gathering and analysis assessment. We're using various checklists that were presented to the council during the docketing process to determine what needs to change per revised state laws and feedback that we've received. And that's, that's what we're using to make this first draft of goals and policies that's going to come to the planning commission, which will get additional planning, additional public review. And we're, as those come out, we'll get more information and kind of go a little bit backwards to the analysis because we're still gathering data. And we'll be able to put public comments into the second revisions. But we got to start somewhere by having something out there for people to review before we can, before we can incorporate people's comments into it. So while we are taking comments now on all of our elements, we intend, the way to really get people's feedback is to actually present something from them to review. And then we'll get, the planning commission will be the body that's accepting that information. And then the consultant will be able to work with the planning commission to see what changes should additionally be made in subsequent drafts. So that's where the planning commission is going to be hit pretty hard with a lot of work. And we're just kind of teeing you up here, explaining, here it comes. We're about ready for you to be hit with that first wave.
Thanks for clarifying that. So here's the, the draft schedule. And I'm not going to read through the entire thing, but as I, as I mentioned, the land use and housing elements are the farthest ahead, and it makes sense to kind of start with those. So that's what will be on the agenda first. And so we are planning to have a meeting next week, or sorry, the next meeting, August 28, to have some introduction to the land use element. And makers will be present to, to provide the presentation and join the discussion. And then the rest of September, excuse me, in September, we will have the draft proposals published so that the public will be able to see those ahead of the planning commission meeting. We'll go, we'll discuss those, introduce those at that first planning commission meeting on the 11th. We have a potential special meeting built in to the schedule on the 18th. That doesn't mean we'll have it, but you know, sometimes there's, there's just a lot of moving parts and things that can come up that aren't anticipated. So we wanted to make sure we had some flexibility to have additional discussion outside of the regular schedule. So I've proposed some dates here for those. And then a public hearing is anticipated to be held on September 25. And then the schedule goes through each of the elements. You'll see transportation would be up next in October. We're targeting, as John and I mentioned, late October for the second open house. November, you would see the economic development element, capital facilities and utilities. So those don't have quite as much content or changes as land use and housing, so we're kind of grouping those together. Pardon?
Can I interject on the economic development one? While we're talking about the specific elements, the Economic Development Committee of the council is working on a economic, economic strategic plan for the city. So they've met with stakeholders in the community to help craft some survey questions. And then those survey questions are going to go out next month sometime, once our consultant helps get that all put together for us. And then we can put out a survey. This is sort of independent of the economic development element of the comprehensive plan, but it's, it's going to feed into it. So after we have that survey, it'll go out to the community, particularly to businesses, to get feedback. And that will help craft this economic strategic plan, which will be coming out. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that complete by November. That's why we're pushing the economic development element out that far. So keep an eye out in the public, next month sometime, we should be getting some information out about that economic development strategic plan survey, particularly business owners are going to be targeted for that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for adding that. So moving down to the bottom here, we do lose two planning commission meetings, of course, around the holidays. So another good reason to have some potential built-in special meetings. And then continued on to the next page, and we get into 2025, and we'll see the parks and recreation elements come in January. And then in February, the climate element and environment and conservation are planned to come forward. And we've got a little bit of, we've got some, an extra meeting in there as well because I think, I mean, it's a new, climate is a new element, so there's going to be a lot to talk about with that. And then you'll see here in mid, early to mid February, we have the third open house targeted for that timeframe. And that's kind of where I, where I lose the detail. And then, you know, we'll kind of update and provide more specific dates for the rest of the process as we move, as we move forward. But once we have gone through this process, as John mentioned, and we have planning commission feedback, members of the public have provided comment, we will integrate those comments and also take the new climate element goals and policies and make sure that those are integrated throughout the comprehensive plan, so everything's consistent and cross-referenced. And then we will have the full final draft, or the full draft for public review and going through that additional public review process before getting to city council. That's, that's all I have. Do you have questions about the schedule or anything else? Mr. Mills?
Clarification, refresh my memory, the transportation element, is that multimodal? Does that include non-motorized, or is that in parks and rec?
No, absolutely, transportation will, will include multimodal, active transportation.
And second was a request, as we get into particularly presentations from consultants due to difficulty seeing some of the stuff that shows up on the screen as they're presenting remotely. And also, we've had some difficulty with the audio. Can we request to have copies of their presentations to review before we show up at the meeting?
Yes, absolutely, we can, we can see what we can do about that, understood.
Appreciate it.
Other questions?
I guess just a little bit more clarification.
Mr. Curry.
Was that, sorry.
That's okay.
A little bit more clarification on the docketing and then the housing action plan piece. It's the city council that's directing that information based on public feedback, and then, then it gets to us to facilitate public discussion. Is that how that original piece is being put together? As opposed to, I don't know, I guess, having sat through a couple of city council meetings, is it typical for city council to decide what's docketed prior to public feedback? Is that that one opportunity, or is this kind of build itself as we go through? I guess just a little more clarification on the structure of what comes to us and how that's put together.
Yeah, well, the, so there is a process outlined in the Anacortes Municipal Code for, for docketing. And so the 2024 docket was combined with the 2025 periodic update. And so the process is to, for the amendment proposals that come in from members of the public, they do go through a staff review for recommendation on docketing, and then council is the first step. They decide, are we even going to, you know, consider this this time around? And so that's, that is a typical process. That doesn't mean that there, you know, that those are the only items in that list that would be considered with the update, because there are a lot of other mandatory and recommended items that also need to be integrated into the process. And I'm sure that as we hear, you know, public comment and feedback and planning commission ideas, you know, it's iterative, and so things change.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That was a long answer, sorry.
And then Chairman Martin, I have one more question as well. With the climate, climate action committee, will there be representation from the planning commission on that committee, or what's that comprised of?
I'm going to throw that one over to Mr. Coleman.
Yes, yeah, it's, so the Climate Policy Advisory Team is, is, the purpose of it is to make sure that the goals and policies of the new climate element are, that members of the impacted community by these policies have the opportunity to, to weigh in. Now largely, what the guidance says is, when it's talking about affected communities, it's talking about poorer neighborhoods, people who are, you know, working in neighborhoods that are, that are affected by, by the impacts of climate change and, you know, the, so make sure that, you know, the resiliency, there's two aspects to the climate element, and one is resiliency is to make sure that the impacts of hotter summers, colder weather winters, bigger storms, sea change, sea level rise, fire danger, all of these things, they affect the community. So make sure that those communities are represented. And then the other aspect of the climate element is trying to come up with goals and policies to reduce the city's carbon production so we can have a part in reducing the acceleration of climate change. So we're trying to get members of the communities that are impacted by all of these primarily. We're also, so that's, you know, we're having, we're still trying to get everybody that, that represents these communities to commit. So I'm not going to state specifically, but impacts on business, maritime, poorer communities, renters, large businesses. And we do intend to have a city council member and a planning commission member in there to kind of be a part of it and see how it's going. And, you know, that offers a lot of transparency, too. So it allows people that are making decisions and recommendations to see what's going on and trust the process. And then also then usher it through and be like, oh, yeah, we're doing really hard work. You guys should really trust, like, yeah, this seems really good. And that's the idea. We are going for, you know, with groups, with advisory groups, once they start to get large, they start to get very difficult to come to any sort of consensus or even make any progress. So we're trying to keep it smaller. There are, in addition to the Climate Policy Advisory Team, the consultants are going to be working with other stakeholders for interviews to get their feedback into the process also. And our consultants are going to have to explain how that process is going to work. But we're starting the Climate Policy Advisory Team work in September. The consultants are really eager to get that going so that they can start that process, which helps, it's one of the first steps. So that is the Climate Policy Advisory Team, which is a, in case I didn't state it, obviously, is a group of stakeholders that are, be advisory group.
Other questions?
Chairman Martin?
Mr. Mills?
Couple weeks ago, there was circulated to the commission, the city emailed, opportunities to serve on the pop-up tables?
Yes.
I responded to that, but I've not heard anything subsequently. Is that?
Did you respond to me?
I did, yes.
Oh. Well, we must be having
Well, we must be having some issues. I was having issues getting things to, like, so I'd appreciate if you would let me know just before. I actually was passing it along. Yep, okay.
In my, in my response, I said I would be happy to do on August 17th, but I noticed in the present, the pop-up table schedule that August 17th wasn't on the schedule.
I was, I, on that slide were only events that had confirmed presence of staff or, or planning commission members. So we will add to that list as, as people would like to attend those.
That'd be great though. We'll be happy to take whatever you're able to do. Ms. Graje, I have a couple of questions. On August 28th, the schedule, which is our next meeting, land use intro, would that be different from the land used intro that we had a few months ago?
So the plan with this one is to, let me find my, let me find my notes on that, just a moment please. So the plan with that one is to sort of refresh memories and do a recap of the capacity of Anacortes to accommodate the growth projections. And also to share engagement results from, from the open house. And finally, to talk about a general list of land use and housing changes that are being developed by the, by the consultant. So I think it's to get some, some early feedback from the planning commission before the draft policies and goals are, are published.
Okay, sounds, I'll have to refresh my memory again. It sounds like what we've already seen, but maybe it's not. Maybe it's something else.
We'll make sure that it's not repetitive.
Okay, well, a little bit of, I'm a teacher, a little bit of repetition is not a bad thing. Yeah. Then the other question I have is on the September 11th, looks like the beginning of introducing how the housing element. And we heard from the gentleman tonight about that proposal, I guess, from, or recommendation from the planning commission on short-term rentals, owner occupied short-term rentals. And I'm wondering if that really might be a place to plug that in somehow? Or I don't know, I don't know. I mean, it could be, I mean, we've already made a recommendation. It's gone to the city council. They've said that they want to incorporate it with the comprehensive plan somehow or the discussion with the comprehensive plan. So anyway.
So amendments to to short-term rentals would affect the land use element. I'm not sure if we have language in the land use element of the comp plan that's, that support that type of use in the city in residential areas or not. So we'd have to look at it as part of the land use element. What we haven't discussed in Libby's timeline there is development regulation changes. So we're still trying to figure out the best way we're going to be able to go about those. So the development regulations are going to enact the policies, goals and policies that we talk about in the elements. There are a handful of items on the docket that are comp plan focused. And so those are going to have to come through in this process somewhere also, probably sewn into whatever the most appropriate element that they're going to be in. So if you haven't heard us talking about the docket, it's because, like I said, they'll be sewn into whichever is the appropriate element. Now, and I think most of those are going to be land use with one transportation one in there. The, the majority of the docket items are development regulation changes. So they'll come across the planning commission when we're talking about development regulation changes. These are all just comp plan changes. And we're, was I starting to say is, we're still trying to figure out when the best time is going to be to bring these development regulation changes through. What we're thinking right now is get our land use policies figured out. And then we'll have a little bit of guidance as to how to handle all of our comp plan change requests and other, any other, I'm sorry, not complaint, development reg change requests should then proceed. The, plus all sorts of other development reg changes that are going to be necessary to enact the other comp plan changes. So it's a bit of a two-step process. And we're not sure yet if we're going to say, take on all of the development regulations that are land use and housing related shortly after the planning commission does its review of the comp plan and housing, or the comp plan part of the housing and land use. Or if we wait until we're done with all of the comp plan amendments and then start working on development regulations. Both have merits, both have drawbacks. So I think we're probably going to have to feel it out as we start going through the land use element and housing element. And if it becomes apparent that we're going to need to also just at this point, start talking about the development regulations that are going to be needed associated with that. Or if it actually works out well for us to talk about the development regulations at a later time. So we're going to feel that one out a little. But this, this tentative planning commission review schedule is, makes it look really easy, but there's a, there's a lot, a lot, lot, lot here. So we're, we're doing our best to try to get it to you in a way that is digestible. And we're just trying to keep up with it too. Like I've mentioned at the docketing hearings, it's Libby and I working on this with the consultants doing drafting of, of stuff. They're not doing as much of the overall direction of how to do the review as we had hoped they were. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that staff's doing this time around.
Understood and appreciated, for sure. And then not to add fuel to the fire, but I guess it's adding fuel to the fire, is the shoreline master plan needing to be updated, right? I think it was 2010?
2020, 2021, but yes, that is, still trying to figure out how that works into all of this because we don't want to put it off until afterwards. So we'll have to kind of figure out where that works its way in.
So for commissioners, if we, with our own limited time, you know, for bedtime reading, whatever, if we would like to be reading the, the current comprehensive plan, would, would it be correct to say there are three elements that would be really helpful if we were quite familiar with?
Three elements?
I'm thinking if we were very familiar with the land use, the housing and the transportation, those are the ones that are getting the most work, right?
Yes, and they're coming up first. I mean, there are others that are getting more work like the climate, but you don't have anything to look at for that one yet. So yeah, I think, you know, reading through and refreshing your memory and getting a head start on that would be. Could be a good idea.
You're welcome. All right, well, we thank you very much for putting together this schedule. And planning commissioners, eat your weevies. Or eat our weevies, getting ready for this. Are there any other things that, oh, we have something else on the agenda. Number six, planning department update.
I think we, you kind of covered the, the two things that we're talking about. The, the council mentioned, you know, that they're, they're doing a review of the housing action plan. So that's a list of menu items that were suggested by the consultants that could, if the city enacted those measures, could help make more housing available and reduce housing costs in the city. So it was never intended that we were to do all of them. So that was what the city council is going to be looking at at Monday night's meeting. The, the planning committee went through that menu of items, said, these are the ones that we should definitely work on and these are the ones that we probably shouldn't spend our time on. And so they're, they're presenting those recommendations to the city council as a whole. And they're, they'll, they'll discuss those. And it's kind of like the docketing part of it, like, city council, no, you know, if they know they're not going to pass anything related to these, like, it's not even spinner wheels working on them. And, you know, even if they liked every one of them, like, it's just not possible for us to enact all of those changes. So they're just choosing the, the best of the crop that they think is going to make the most impact with the least effort. And that's what's, that's what they're going to be discussing. And then once they make those recommendations, we'll bring that to the, as part of the housing element for the planning commission to dig deep. Don't worry, there's still a lot. I think the council agenda was published today. So you can actually go and look at the council agenda. I believe it's the last item on the council agenda. And you can see that list and what the recommendations are. And you can see there's, there's plenty to work on, even if they didn't say to, for us to, you know, move to, to review all of them. And then, yeah, there's a couple of other council agenda items that are related to planning items that I guess we'll just see their discussion on it. One of them is just to move some stuff around in the municipal code to make it read better. It's a non-substantive changes. It's just rearranging. So that one's not going to be going to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order?
One more. So you probably heard, we just heard today, I think today, time moves fast around here. You remember the planning commission had approved a shoreline permit for, for the utility wiring along the shore for the port. And then that was appealed to the council and the council upheld it. And then it was appealed to the shoreline hearings board. And today, the shoreline's hearings board made an unofficial announcement that they're not going to take that appeal up. And so they've rejected it. So once they make their final rejection of it, then they'll put out a formal notice and see what the next step is.
Thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.